Call the meeting in order for the day. First item on our agenda is approval of today's agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Any citizens that would like to be heard on anything not on the agenda? Hearing none. Approved payment of bills and vouchers.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Approved minutes of the May 5th and 12th county board meetings.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. And county engineer's office.
Morning Nathan.
Morning Nathan.
Well, the first item on the agenda is to get approval to correct a spreadsheet from our equipment purchase that we did a few months ago. And I've actually got a new one. Brian found another correction that we missed after the re-correction. The good news is, I guess, is that the bottom line, nothing changes with the equipment purchases. There was a typo. The trade number for 103 was accidentally put in 104, and 104 was in 103. Net out difference to the county is zero. It doesn't affect the way the bids or the way the quotes turned out. And actually, one of the vehicles is already here and in service. So, we are going to make payment on the unit, and the auditor's office realized the error.
I'll move to approve the correct.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Bridge maintenance agreement.
This agreement formalizes the process that we've already been using as a practice for many years. It's between the city of Moorhead, Fargo, the county, and the Park District. It basically lays out who will be responsible to put together maintenance contracts for bridges between Fargo and Clay County, and then the other entities as well. Mainly what the agreement lays out is that we will do the inspection, the bridge maintenance inspection on these bridges, and then Fargo will reimburse us for the cost, half of the costs for the bridges. Any maintenance projects that are necessary out there, we would coordinate with the city of Fargo a year ahead of time. We would agree on the scope of the work, and then we would, the county would then set in motion, obtaining a set of plans, putting together a proposal, and then letting it out for bidding, which is similar to what we've been doing. This mainly involves our Wall Street Bridge, our bridge on County 1, and our bridge on the Convent Road, County 12. The other bridges in the agreement are between Moorhead and Fargo, or the Park District and Moorhead. So, those are the three main bridges.
Mr. Chair, Kevin, has this been through committee?
No, this, I don't think it needs to.
Okay.
I think that, my question would be, is, this is pretty standard language. It's what we've done in the past, right?
Jenny has reviewed it.
Okay.
Yep, it's standard.
Yeah, I was wondering which all bridges. So, we're talking about the Broadway Bridge, right? County 1, Broadway North.
Correct.
And then the Wall Street Bridge. So, there's two right next to each other there.
And then.
And then the Convent. Okay. So, is that technically our bridge, together with Fargo?
With Fargo, yes.
Okay. But like when we did, when the Wall Street Bridge was done, that was still done with state bridge money?
It was, and actually, our North Dakota partner, when it was built, was Cass County. But I think they have, as soon as the bridge was built, they rescinded their, they turned it over to the city of Fargo.
Oh, the city of Fargo, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Approval to fill highway shop foreman position.
We recently received resignation notice from our maintenance foreman, and we would like to move with replacement of the position as soon as possible, as this is a critical position for our department.
Yeah, that's without question. I think we need to do that.
Absolutely.
Do you see candidates coming from within, or?
Possibly, yes.
I would approve with the ability to backfill.
I second that.
We have motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries.
Will there be any cost savings on that?
There will, yes. Jerry was at the top of the scale, so the new position would presumably come in at the lower end.
Did he retire?
Yeah, he's retiring, yes.
Great.
Actually, I probably should have said that.
Yeah, that might be.
Sorry. Yes, he is retiring. I just couldn't remember how many years of service it was, so I didn't want to say.
Yeah.
The last items, Jane Patrick, do you want to come up? Jane is with the Safe Roads Coalition, and is here to talk about a.
Morning.
Morning.
MOU that we've put together.
Yeah, and I have a little update for you guys. I met with you all, oh boy, several months ago already, when we first kind of got started with the coalition work. But we're in the process right now of applying for a second grant from the Department of Public Safety, Office of Traffic Safety. And our primary purpose here today is just to request your support.
Are these all the same thing here?
They are all the same, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
There's two pages?
Nope, just one. It's back to back there.
You have a few extras that may fall.
Yeah. So, yeah, I wanted to kind of give you some updates on what we've been doing. We've talked about, they're kind of all listed here. We have established kind of our coalition, and been up and going now for about eight months. We've established a fatal review committee who is, looks at all of the fatal and serious injury crashes that occur in the county. And we've identified some trends that kind of go along with why our crashes are occurring, and what's, you know, the cause of those. Right now, we're really high still on lack of seatbelt use in this county. So, that's one area that we're focusing on. And speed is also an issue. So, fortunately, the impaired driving isn't quite as big of a factor for Clay County crashes, but those other areas are the ones we're going to focus on, so. And we did do some worksite safety training. We appreciated the opportunity to meet with county highway folks and do some training there and education awareness. And then, of course, we do quite a few school events and things like that. If you slip over the sheet, that's just kind of an overview of some of the things we've done. You may have seen our poster around. We were, had collaboration with several of the law enforcement entities in Clay County to do a poster. We're looking at working with the engineering department for the city of Moorhead and the Clay County Department to look at possible and potential crash areas, places where there maybe haven't been real serious crashes yet, but where, you know, law enforcement or EMS folks see maybe some of those more minor crashes that are occurring in possible engineering projects that could help to prevent more serious crashes in the future, so. Right now is our big seatbelt mobilization. I guess we're in the peak of that, where we have extra enforcement out on the road or stopping folks that aren't wearing their seatbelts, so. Any questions that you have for me? No? Okay.
On the seatbelt thing, that they can stop or not, just for seatbelts?
They can, yes. Minnesota's a primary state. That means they can pull you over for that. But we would request your support in the form of an MOU from the engineering department. Actually, I'm not sure if Bill Burquist has been here, but we have also requested one from the sheriff's department, so we're looking for your support again next year.
I'll move support for the MOU.
I'll second. Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Back to Ferguson.
Yep. Thank you. I'm safe, right?
Hope you pay my attention.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. Have a good drive back.
Thank you.
Well, let's see. We might as well do some committee reports. I don't know, anybody here from the, just Wayne, you want to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. On Tuesday, May 19th, Local Advisory Council of Adult Mental Health, General Business, and we had a presentation by Lori Van Beeke on Matbus. She went over a recent survey and had well-documented statistics. Several suggestions were made to Lori, one being that the survey and the statistics would be more meaningful if they were to be broken down in the future by particular bus routes, and that was received well by Lori. Then there were agency reports from Clay County Social Services, Lakeland Mental Health Solutions, ARMS, which is an acronym for Adult Rehabilitative Mental Health Services, from the Moorehead Police Department, and from Summit Counseling. On Thursday, May 21st, we had a Lake Egazy Regional Library Executive Board Meeting and General Business. We discussed signatory funding for 2016. At this time, we're looking at asking the signatories for a 2% increase. That could be more, depending upon knowns at this point. And then we had the director's report and board members, board members' reports. And that's the conclusion.
Thursday, I went to FM cog meeting, just updates on the current budget. They're doing very good. Also, the bike way, I'm sure you're acquainted with the bike stuff that they're putting out there, required orders. This program's going very good, and they're going to print up 12,500 maps, and they're going to hand out or put in different places for people to get the bike paths. Also, on Thursday, I went on a, had a truancy intervention meeting over at the Family Service Center. Pretty interesting stuff that brought a guy from Hennepin County talking about truancy and stuff, you know. I was interested to know when the school, you know, when is it in the school's problem? When does it become Clay County's problem, and stuff like that? So, you know, Hennepin County, he was saying that when the kid gets 15 years old, you know, they sort of give up on him. They think he's, you know, he's no longer behavioral help, so they lean more, younger ones, and stuff like that, trying to get them to stay, keep them in school. Just an interesting thing in how they handle truancy and stuff like that. And it's good discussion by people there. That's two ahead.
Jenny?
Last week, I attended the Alzheimer's Association luncheon at the Fargo Air Museum. Just a nice presentation from the local leaders, just talking about how that's quickly becoming one of the biggest causes of death in America. I had the planning commission also that day, where we approved a request for a couple to put a horse boarding facility out by Turtle Lake. And we also talked a little bit about our decision to remove the overlay on that piece in South Moorhead. I think Tim will come back, and we'll talk a little more about that. We also, I had the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County on last Thursday. They talked about how they're busy with school tours right now. They've doubled the amount of tours and kids that are coming in from all the area schools. We elected a new chair, Les Baki. We also developed a new fund development committee to kind of look at fundraising, and talked a little bit about the historical society taking over the Comstock House when that reopens again, and offering that up for tours. Seems like that will be a good joint partnership. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Kevin.
The only meeting that I had last week was in regards to the regional juvenile jail, or juvenile detention center, not jail. And we had been reviewing some options to expand and remodel, and those numbers are coming in way too high, from what we had anticipated versus what we would get in available beds. So, I think the discussion was, was to send it back for further ideas and, you know, Grant, I know you were there too, so I, it was kind of disheartening to see the numbers. We were sitting, talking about numbers reaching $1 million, and there's just, there's no way that that's in our current plan. You know, it's like, that would be like $100,000 per bed. And it's, so, so we're kind of asking to go back to the drawing board and see if we can come up with some other solutions to do this better, so.
That was the same for me. Yeah, it was just excessive for what we need to do there right now, so we're going to have to reorganize and come up with a better plan to address our needs over there, so.
Well, if I can add, Mr. Chairman, I think there's, there's two components that are going on there. There's one that's dealing with the space needs. It's the opposite of what it was just two or three years ago, when we were wondering how we were going to keep the facility open. Now, it's kind of busting at the seams. But we, we really are going to have to discuss our membership and programming. What's happened is we've instituted a couple of new programming opportunities that have been taken very, from all the member counties, it's been a very good deal for, for these kids. But unfortunately, it's their long-term deals. They last a long time, and we, we enter this deal now where we sell beds on an annual basis, and counties can just purchase as little as a point, you know, two tenths of a bed, or, and when they send a child into that program, it's, can be a year-to-year-and-half program, and they've only bought 45 days' worth of bed space. And so, it's creating some problems, so. But we're going to work on the programming end of it too, and try to probably modify our agreement with the counties.
Okay, thanks. Rhonda, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rhonda.
All right. I am here for a.
Go ahead, hang on one second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Frank, yeah?
Yeah, as long as Rhonda's here. I talked about that, I know you, not that you were supposed to be prepared for this, but I talked a little bit about the truancy program that you had on Thursday.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to get some more insight into that. Not that you had to be prepared for this.
Sure.
But if you want to talk about that a little bit, I thought it was an important thing.
Yeah, okay. Do you want me to do that? No?
Let's do the position.
Okay.
Let's spend our money for.
All right. Okay, we have a financial worker resignation. This is a gal that's been with us a little over two years. She is from the Lakes area, so she got a job, unfortunately, closer to home. So, we are losing her, and I'm requesting to fill her position, and I do anticipate we might have some internal movement or a request for movement, so I would request to backfill any open position.
A motion to approve that request with the backfill option as well.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, did you want me to talk about truancy?
I would appreciate that if you would.
Okay.
That was a very important meeting.
I can just say briefly, we had a meeting, let's see, today's Tuesday, so it was last week, Thursday afternoon. We, we've come before the board and talked before about our county's responsibility to address truancy issues. But we've been struggling a little bit with the numbers of truancy and educational neglect cases that we're having. And unfortunately, when we're, we get a report of a maltreatment situation and educational neglect or truancy, our efforts have been in addressing the maltreatment cases. So, we have gotten a little bit behind on our truancy cases, and the numbers have increased. And as a system, we're, have been kind of struggling a little bit from the school standpoint, as well as our community providers on how to address and meet the needs. So, we had a meeting last Thursday and brought school principals and some superintendents, as well as community providers and county staff, and together just to talk about the issue, we brought in a presenter that came to us from Hennepin County that's done a lot of research and has done a lot of good work in Hennepin County, and shared with us some best practice models, some things to be thinking about. So, it was kind of one of several meetings that we'll have in the future to try to look at our program and make some decisions about how we can impact the issue a little bit better in the future. So, yeah, thank you so much for coming, and Brian came as well, and was helpful just to make sure that you could also hear about the issues that we're dealing with, so.
I thought it was interesting, like I say, what is it in the school's problem, what is Clay County's problem, and such a situation?
Yeah, we struggle with that, and the statute does kind of define where the county role starts, but what's a little unique for us is that our collaborative, right now, our truancy intervention program is funded by the Clay County Collaborative. The school districts, as well as the rural school districts, put some money into the program, as well as we do in the county, our county budget. So, it's collaboratively funded, so we all have a stake in it and a role in addressing truancy. But yeah, there are some statutes which govern at what point the county is ultimately responsible and needs to consider filing petitions with the court, so.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Okay, preliminary budget discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Firstly.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. And members of the commission.
If you turn to the backside, one, there's the memo, is the front letter that goes out to the departments, and the backside is really what we're looking for, your approval and discussion on. It's very early on for the 2016 budget, but the process has to start, and we have to get some preliminary figures in, and some wishes, and some guidelines from you folks as to where we want to go. So, today is the day that we have kind of set for the discussion on that. I guess it was last session, we had the first third of the year expenditures discussed and revenues, and we're on a pretty good pace, and I don't know, I guess, what are your guys' desires this year? I know it's real early, so it's pretty hard to, to, to talk in specifics. I know one thing's happened, and I'm sure, as you guys have reminded us several times, there's been a few positions added this year. They're going to haunt us a little bit when we come in and start looking at budgets, and we're seeing it kind of, I don't want to say all over, but boy, no department seems to be, being spared right now. It seems like there's added workload, added workload, added workload every year. You're hearing it in social services, and you're hearing it in IT, you're hearing it in public health, that you've added some positions. It's kind of all around, so businesses.
Well, then we shouldn't have to really add any this next year, then.
Let's hope not.
Mr. Chair?
About health insurance, are there anything that's going on with that yet? We don't know anything, I suppose.
That's not till, that's not till September, or you don't, they're close to September.
Wayne?
That was my question. Yeah, nothing yet. I guess, you know, sometimes our guesses are as good as theirs, depending upon what we've heard about our, our members. I won't say our staff, because it's, the membership is a little expanded upon that, and we have some situations still going on that are costing us some dollars. So, but we had quite a hike last year, so let's hope it's somebody else's turn this year.
Well, you know, and hopefully, we'll get some detailed presentations this year, and I, I don't say that just for me, but I know it's Jenny's, going to be Jenny's first full year going through the budget process. I know that you sat in and watched Summit last year, but I think this early on stuff starting in June and July is pretty important to.
So, I think that what your request is, that you would like to see it all, or most, if not all, the departments come before you.
Well, especially, especially if they have new requests.
Absolutely, yes. And that's kind of what we did last year, with the new requests, and.
And even if they don't have new requests, if they exceed a certain percentage, we should be hearing why.
Talking about, yeah. Okay.
So, this is what you want to, you want approval of this?
We'd like approval for that, yes.
I guess I'd also like to see just some departments, what type of savings they can do. I mean, I realize every year we come in with, we need this, we need this, you know, is there anything going on that we can save any money on, you know? I realize that may be tough, you know, it may be tough, but just nice to hear some idea that we're going to save some money somewhere.
Yeah, I think that's a real good direction for us, because we do say that in our, Lori, I put together a letter that goes out, you know, don't just ask for things without telling us how they're going to fund, and what is it replacing? If you're adding software that is supposed to be, you know, $3,000 software, why? Why, what good does it do? Not just add, add, add all the time, and we've tried to, we hold one-on-one meetings with every department, and we ask them about that, you know? They always want more, but what is it replacing? Why is it being more efficient? I mean, frankly, I guess I got a little personal peeve on my own. We add so much technology, and this is supposed to be a great and wonderful thing, but it seems like we have to add people, even though we've added the technology, and technology is supposed to supersede some of this staff requests. But it doesn't seem to get there, so we'll, with your, with your help and with our help of working together, we could probably watch that very closely.
Mr. Chair. Another thing too, I, this year, in the, these first four months of this year, we have had quite a few new requests for employees. That were not part of the budget process from last year. And I wonder how, so shortly into a new year, we could all, all of a sudden recognize the need for these new positions that we might not have known during the budgeting process last year. And I don't know the reason why, but that makes our job even harder when we pass a budget. Say, we passed the 2016 budget now, and then two months into it, they're coming to us saying, we need more, we need more. We've already now set the levy. We've got our tax, our, our source of dollars being collected. We can't go back and add to that. So, either we have to do, as Commissioner Gross said, and have them find other savings to offset it, or we have to go into our reserve for general operation, and that's not what I like to do. I mean, going into reserves for something that's long-term is, makes a lot more sense. So, I just would caution all of the department heads to really look at, you know what, I'd rather have them ask early and say we can't do it than not ask, and then come back the following year and ask again.
Right. And Mr. Chair, I think some of them have done that, and I guess, as I'm sitting here thinking about some of the additions, the juvenile center added a few people, and their, their requests were for more, and then until we got the funding source, did they come back. So, hopefully, the funding hasn't increased there because of the additional revenue, so there's an additional, and it was the same with the detox center. The detox center was, was really being, they were trying to run it too lean, and then they added some revenue sources, so should, shouldn't have a negative effect on the county budget. And the same with social services. So, I guess as I'm sitting here thinking.
On social services, they had the issues with child abuse, and then the state, you know, changing.
Yes, yeah. So, some of the things were out of our control, and then you added a school resource officer, which was really, really needed out in the Dilworth.
But wasn't that part of the budget process, that one? I thought that was.
No, the first one was for Holly, and Felton was, but the second one came in mid-year during the year. So, but then that shared with the school, so that shouldn't be, so there've been quite a few people added. You're absolutely right. And then last year too, of course, we added one county attorney halfway through the, the year, so we'll see the full effects of that this year. So, it'll be like adding an extra half a year, but you're doing that with the knowledge of last year. So, I guess when, like I said, when I start talking about the departments, I just moved off four different departments have added people, and I think we did that when we were able to add halfway through the year last year.
That was, that was part of the.
Oh, no, no, I know that, yeah, I know that. But what I'm saying is, then we get the full effect, so they're, you're adding a half without.
And for 2016, can you remind me what we had? And for 2016, can you remind me what we had, based on our escalated, your three-year COLA, what's 2016 set to be?
Two percent.
Okay. Then the following year goes up.
Yeah, 15 is two, 16 is two, and 17 is.
Three and a quarter.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, one of the board's wishes on the target dates for the.
I just want a second here if I could just.
A little bit of an adjustment, it says the budget sheets will go out on June 2nd. They'll actually probably go out tomorrow. I've got a conference in Alexandria most of the week next week, so I'll have them, they're almost ready to go, I'm just waiting for the updated from today's bills.
These guidelines are basically the same as what you've done in years prior.
Yeah.
So our preliminary levy is due when this year?
The 30th, they adjusted that actually last year.
So they gave us two more weeks?
Yep, usually the 15th.
Okay, well, that helps a little bit. Yeah, I would move approval of this budget calendar.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Very none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Both say aye and motion carries.
No, we'll get it rolling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, you want to give us your update? I don't see Brian here yet, so.
Sure. I think so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. You talked about that juvenile detention. We met with Steve, the Commissioner Wayland, Commissioner Campbell, myself, met with Steve Larson over at the juvenile center and talked about the different options, say, for the rest of the board. They are, have had just a very, very busy year this year and it's not just because we've taken on Cass County as well, but the Minnesota counties have seen an increase in their population as well. So they've been running full occupancy over there and that's 30 in the detention and 15 in the non-secure. They call it secure and non-secure. So that's 45 young adults that they've had over there and that's way over their average before, but Commissioner Campbell mentioned the programming. Our juvenile center has done some awfully good changes in their programming and it's not causing the population to increase, but it's causing them to come here because of the good programming. So there's some positive things in there, but it's unfortunate we're seeing the numbers. We have to do something with that. We met with Soil and Water and I think that was talked about a little bit last board meeting about, they have partnered for years and that partnership is falling apart a little bit out there at Soil and Water, so they're looking at a different place to call home for office space and they're wondering about our technical assistance and things and we said we'd certainly offer them advice if we don't have any room in our staff to add some support services. They'd really like the highway if there's any room out there at all. And Dave likes that idea as well because they do work on a lot of programs together, so we'll see where that goes, so. Checking with the state right now on room. I attended some, last Wednesday morning, I attended a couple-hour seminar on recruitment and retention of employees and some of our departments receive great plenty volumes of applicants, but then some of our departments, we really struggle for getting good quality applicants. So we're gonna talk about this at management team meeting as well and that is how we recruit, where do we advertise, who do we seek for our new replacements? I think that's really important and just a couple points of that that were brought up that we'll be talking about. You know, we advertise in the paper normally, we don't go to the radio. And of course, who goes to the paper to look for vacancies? People that aren't working or that are dissatisfied with jobs. Who would you like to hire? You'd like to hire someone that is employed, that enjoys their job. That's the type of person you want. So we need to look at that and also then the retention of our employees, what are we doing to retain those? And I think we have a good retention rate, but we have some ideas that we need to discuss as to how we retain those people too. So I think it was some real good ideas in a couple hours that.
Are those points that you can forward on to our department heads as they advertise for these employees?
That's exactly right, yeah, yeah. We'll talk about that and see where we should go with this from a countywide standpoint too, how we address it. We had a diversion administrative advisory meeting and I think you guys are all aware that the lawyers are appealing the decision by the judge on the work for the Oxbow Hickson Baki levy that surrounds that and so they're doing some work on that. Held a central administrative managers meeting during last week to talk about some of these various issues that are going on in, with their departments as well. The, that social services child truancy, I attended that, that was an entire afternoon, it was like 1:30 to 4:30 and so it was really kind of, it was very informative, I thought. It was very much an eye-opener. And of course, they talked about the behavior of up to third and fourth grade really kind of determines whether that child is going to be a good attendee at school and math and reading skills were another trait that determined whether they are going to be truant or not. And of course, you, as well as I, know that it's a, that's one of the signals of many other things that may be helping happening in their child's life, from parenting to jobs to living styles to moves and different things. It was quite interesting. And then we're struggling a little bit on some of the, some hardship property that wasn't cleaned up properly last fall and we're working with the diversion on that because, you know, we're struggling with the budget issue with that and how it affects Minnesota and so there's lots of things to work on there, but anyway, Mr. Chair, that's my report.
Thanks. Okay, authorized migration and police wire radio communications, Brian and Ray Freeman, come on up. Tori and Ray, you guys want to come up too or are you just here for backup?
Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Get the guys to raise their gun.
Yeah.
Well, we are here. Our final plan is completed. Again, we're looking at, can anybody get that plan? We'll get it over. I do have Ray Freeman here, he's going to be, he's got to complete our planning and our plan. Again, we're looking for a resolution to authorize migration to the police wire and radio communication to the statewide armor system. And I guess I'll turn it over to Ray to kind of give you an overview of the plan.
All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
As Brian outlined, we've been working together with all the public safety and some public works agencies within the county to prepare this plan and in working and talking with these guys, it sounds like they've given you a pretty good overview and presentation of why this is being done and so forth. As I told these guys, I can go through this plan with as much or as little detail as you'd like. I have a high-level overview that I could just work off of if you'd like and then we can open it up for questions. The technical elements of the plan talk about the public safety agencies that are included in this plan and they're listed on one of the pages in there, but there's 19 public safety agencies and three public works or school agencies that are incorporated, which is all the public safety in the county, of course, and then some of the public works and schools. We talk about the number of radios that are in the plan. Total of 703, including some growth, 662 for public safety and 41 for public works. There's a number of other technical elements in here, we talk about the number of IDs that are needed in the system. This radio system, again, as the fellows have probably indicated, let's see, it's something like, a little bit like a cellular system, but dedicated to public safety in that every radio has a very unique electronic serial number and ID built into it so that when the radio talks, the system tracks that radio and authorizes different things. And the radios automatically roam to the towers, the best tower site, so there's no need to manually select the tower site for the best coverage and so forth. We take a look at the dispatch equipment that's going to be needed with the Red River Regional Dispatch and they'll be replacing their existing, what's called a Motorola Gold Elite console system with the new Motorola MCC 7500 console system, which requires a direct interface into the network and that's done through, it'll be a combination of microwave radio and fiber optic connectivity, which provides a lot of backup and redundancy. If one of them fails, the other one will carry the radio traffic. There's some other technical elements that are included there. We talked about CCGW ports, which is actually an important element in the dispatch side of things because the dispatch center, of course, handles the Fargo and Cass County traffic, which is not part of this 800 megahertz armor system, it's still gonna be a VHF system. So it's gonna be a little bit unique in that this console, the new Motorola console system will be connected into the state radio, the Minnesota radio network as well as the radio equipment on the North Dakota side of things. So that is an important element of this. We take a look at the tower sites that are incorporated into the plan and again, as you've been advised, the state has provided all the tower sites that will be used as part of the system. And that's actually an important issue with this in that today, the city and the county, on the Minnesota side especially, spend a lot of money in maintaining and operating tower sites. And once the transition is made to this new system, a lot of that will be minimized and some of your maintenance costs will actually go down because you'll be able to use the state's radios, towers and repeaters and so forth. In there, we take a look at the tower sites, there's three tower sites that are in the county as well as some tower sites outside the county and there's coverage maps in here that show those. And again, the key is that the radios will automatically roam to whatever tower site is best at the time it's being used. One of the things that we have to look at is, from a tower perspective, are there enough towers? We take a look at, and there's some coverage maps in there, you'll see the colored maps, I see you have some out there on the table here. In those maps, I think it's fairly self-evident, if it's green, it's good and if it's red or white, it's bad. And we do multiple maps looking at the different types of radios that would be used. Obviously, a mobile radio, one that's mounted in a vehicle with an antenna up on the roof, has higher power, is gonna have better coverage. And then from there it goes, kind of the next step down is a walkie-talkie or handheld portable radio being used outdoors. And then from there, we take a look at the walkie-talkie being used in a building. And of course, as we all know, the further you get into a big building, the worse the coverage gets because it's trying to communicate with the tower that's outside somewhere. And overall, the coverage looks very good. In fact, it's good enough that the group has come to the consensus that no additional towers would be needed to provide the level of coverage required for public safety operations. And that's not always the case. There's other places like down in Crow Wing County and Cass County, Minnesota, and a number of other places where the county actually had to spend money to put in additional towers to get the coverage they wanted. The other thing we look at is the channel capacity at the tower sites and without getting into too much detail, at every tower, if you walked into the locked building at the bottom, you'd see a rack of repeater stations that are shared by everybody that uses that tower site, not just the county, not just the city, but MNDOT, State Patrol and other, DNR and other neighboring agencies that might be roaming through the area. So it's, as part of this plan, we take a look at the number of radios that are to be expected to be used at any given tower site. And then we do some calculations as to whether the number of repeaters that the state has installed or is installing will be enough. And the state puts in five repeaters or five channels at every tower, that's their standard. And in looking at the calculations, the only site that we had concern with was the Moorhead site and of course, you know, here in the most populous area of the county, there's gonna be a lot of radios, so the recommendation was to add two additional channels at that site. In fact, Moorhead is the one site where the state had already put in six instead of five, anticipating additional traffic. We're recommending two additional, just to be safe, basically. Other, let's see here, to a great extent, that's it. We talk about, a little bit about maintaining some elements of the existing VHF system for paging and this new system does not incorporate paging. It is still the county or city's responsibility to maintain a paging system. We talk about the schedule and of course, the planning to begin in 2016 if everything comes together and it will take up to a year to get this fully implemented. So having addressed those elements, the last, of course, most popular topic is the cost, which is on page 27 of the plan. And we've got an itemized cost schedule here for the various components that are required to make this full transition. The first line item is the consoles for the Red River Dispatch Center at $1.23 million, but there are 13 consoles. Actually, you pay, you buy 12, you get a 13th one for free and it's not.
Good deal.
Always a good deal, although it's actually, it's something that Motorola has proposed from a technical and operational perspective, they provide a, whatever number you buy, you get one more free, so we'll just leave it at that. It says 800 megahertz RF control stations, those are 800 megahertz radios that actually mount in a rack in the back room for backup and some recording services. The next line item is the 800 megahertz channel expansion at the Moorhead Tower Site for $100,000. Microwave fiber connectivity at $80,000. Radio user training, we've got $10,000 in there. Training is actually a very important part of moving to this new system. Because it is a shared radio system, it's a very complex radio system, it's important that everybody that uses one of these radios knows how to use it properly and what it can or can't do for them. We've got a network management terminal in here for $20,000, project management for $25,000, you bring in some outside help to help with the transition. We've got a contingency fund of $75,000, so a total of what we'll call system equipment of $1.6 million. From there, the next line items are the actual mobile and portable radios. We call them subscriber radios, again, kind of using the cell phone terminology. Law enforcement at a little over $1.4 million. Fire EMS at $991,000. And other is some public works and schools for 137. So the radio, the mobile and portable radio component of this is $2.59 million for a grand total of $4.195, almost $4.2 million. So certainly not an insignificant expense. And that pretty much summarizes the plan.
Thank you. Questions for gentlemen?
I'd go back to the coverage, I noticed there's, there gets to be some issues around Barnesville, Brian. What?
I'm on page 20, 19 and 20.
South and rest of Barnesville?
Yeah. Is that, and I noticed that it appears it's not quite as bad as long as they remain in their mobile unit. I think there you referred to, because then they have their antenna on the car and everything. You look down in the Barnesville area, that's the area that's obviously still in Clay County that would be concerning to me that we, and then when we move over to them being out, if they're out in the field somewhere where they're chasing down. they're out in the field somewhere, whether they're chasing down somebody or dealing with a rural fire or something, and they're on their mobile phones, it seems like they're, according to this, their coverage is much worse.
So I'm looking at the map on page twenty, and I'm looking at...
That's in actually Wilken County.
Yeah, that's actually outside the county.
That's, see, Barnesville city limits is the blue.
Yeah.
And so if you go south, where the line, that's the county line there, and if you go south and west over by Norwegian Grove, is that what you're looking at?
I'm looking right in here.
Yep, that's out of, that's out of our county.
Okay. Well, how about, how about then the straight, looking straight north at Barnesville? There's some areas in there that are...
Yeah, there's, oh, yeah, you're looking at the...
Are they valleys or something down there?
Some of them are.
The other, if I may, an important point on these coverage maps, if you get these same maps from Motorola, they're either green or white. They show either coverage or no coverage. What we do, if it's a yellow area, it'll probably still work fine. We show that because folks that we're working with want to know where the signal's getting weaker, even though it'll probably still work fine. So what we say is that a yellow is actually still good coverage. It's where you get red and white that it gets questionable, and at that point is where you do some field testing and find out how it's working. And I know that, that these guys have done some coverage testing already, and I don't know if you want to, if you look at a particular area or not.
Right, we, you know, we tested the spots that we have problems right now, and, you know, that's basically up to the roll log area, and then looking to my schools. And this, this system basically operated a hundred, I shouldn't say a hundred percent, ninety percent, and it went our whole system there. So we have looked at the spots where we thought we were going to have problems, and we have tested them, and they seem like they're, they're a lot better.
I guess my, my point being is we had some of those spots, and so if, if we were looking at this area where Jenny has pointed out that it's Wilken County, and it's very close to the border of Clay, would there, would there be a tower in Wilken County then that might, from looking at it from Wilken County's map, that this would all be green from their map, or?
It should be, because, because they have, you're looking at the Barnesville, there's a tower right next to, about a mile out of Barnesville, it's in Wilken County, but it's another tower that we have used. So it should not. I don't think it's Wilken.
There are other towers that are outside the scope of this map here. We tend to include towers if they're going to provide coverage into your county. If they don't, then we leave them off the map. I guess, if I'm looking at this map, the one on page twenty, the Barnesville Tower is that, you know, X you see there with the white box. Obviously, the area of concern is to the east of there, where there's a lot of red and yellow and so forth. Most of that, you know, is probably fairly well-covered.
By, by another tower? Or you think still from that tower?
Still from that tower. You know, again, what we're showing here is, the only areas that you would, I want to say be, potentially be concerned with are the red areas. And these maps are also conservative. I mean, it's our job to try and be as accurate as possible, but if we have to err at all, it's going to be on the conservative side. We certainly don't want to show coverage where there might not actually be any, so we kind of dial these in, so it's a little bit conservative. And when you see areas like that, we recommend you go out and do some field testing. And I don't, the testing that you guys have done, I don't think there's been any concern down in that area, is there?
No.
Okay, well, then that's fine, no, no, that's good for me. You mentioned that this system would not cover paging. What's, Brian, what's our Clay County's plan, and even for the city of Moorhead's plan, and other police departments in Clay County? What are the, what's, what's the plan for paging?
Well, you know, of course, it's just fire and EMS that we page. We don't do any police paging.
Okay.
So we'll have to go to a new paging system, actually, Brian, sir, you can touch a little bit, Cass County has a different paging system than we do, and we are just going to kind of go off that system. So basically, what we have to do is move some of our repeaters to the state towers, we can page out them towers, and then it's, and what is it called, Brian?
Brian, maybe if you want to talk to that mic over there, if you want to do that. Do you want to do that?
Thank you. Yes, as far as for the paging, to address that issue, currently, there's an existing VHF paging system that kind of supports, we'll say, from Fargo and westward. It's actually, Cass County has a system, and what we would look at doing is expanding coverage off of that same system. In essence, so the way the Cass County first responders are currently paged and alerted, we would just implement that same architecture in Clay County. And that would involve adding, I believe, three repeaters on that, because currently, I think there's six, which one is located right on the Fargo High Rise, which of course, radio coverage does not recognize state or, you know, borders and so on. So there's going to be a, quite a significant benefit from that site into Minnesota. And I've already had talks with Moorhead Fire, and that's their plan to migrate to that also. They can support their own tone paging if they want to, but they're deciding that that's probably the way they're going to go also.
So we do, we have that expense here, a hundred thousand dollars. Again, you know, that's what's going to be our cost of accounting to be able to make them repeaters. We all, we should be able to use our old repeaters, right, Brian?
We'll be able, and that'll be part of the plan, too, of what we have currently out there for repeaters and so on. We're going to do everything we can to reuse whatever assets are possible. The plan doesn't really detail that, but that's part of my job, is to, I know the existing inventory and assets that are out there, so I'm going to do everything I can to leverage whatever we have, whether it's, you know, on the sheriff's side or fireside and so on, so.
Again, all the first responders or EMS and fire, they're going to have to get the pages, right? Their old ones do not work off that. But they are a lot less expensive, they're only like a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-five bucks.
A hundred and fifty tops, whereas their current, their current pages run close to $500, you know? So when you, when you multiply that out times, you know, a hundred and some responders, obviously the math adds up really fast, and the benefit there, and...
We will not have to have any repeaters on our tower currently. The tower we have, a landfill, that'll basically be, it'll be empty once it's done.
Okay. And so the timeframe on this whole conversion to armor, are we looking at 2016 for this?
Well, that's when we would start, if everything falls in order. And by the time we'd be able to switch over, it'd be either the first quarter or late first quarter of 2017 before we'd actually switch over. Now, if our grant funding for, for fire and EMS does not work, we're going to have to, you know, wait another year for them to switch over. So we might be on both systems for a while.
Okay.
Until they...
And they'll talk to each other?
Yeah, they'll still be, they'll be the same as today, seemingly, basically.
And then, so, and then, Brian, that's the 4.2 million cost here, I'm assuming there's going to be some grant money that's going to help pay for some of this?
Yes, you know, Ray talked a little bit about the system, which the dispatch part. The state of Minnesota gives, they have, called ECN grants, basically come from the state budget, and they normally pay 45% of that. But ju, just dispatch. Now, for, for our mobiles and portables, the fire and EMS can apply for a fire grant, and that's what our plans are this fall, is to apply for a fire grant for communications. And if they get that, basically, it pays 95% of their mobiles and portables.
So those fire departments are working on their own funding source for their needs?
Correct, yes, yep. And then for us, as law enforcement, there really isn't anything out there for that.
But, but right now, for, for our law enforcement, for Clay County's law enforcement, which we're going to be responsible for, we currently have all your radios in the Internal Service Fund, don't we?
Yes, sir.
So, so we will have something...
Yes.
Probably, maybe not enough to cover old cost versus new cost, but, but we will have something.
Yeah, we will be pretty close, actually, and then if we have to, for the, for the paging system, too, we should be able to cover it.
Okay. Okay.
Jenny?
Mr. Freeman had said that there would be some sort of cost savings once this, this whole process is implemented to the county, for not going off of the other towers, correct? Is there any way to, to guess how much of that cost savings we'll see? I mean, what will that number be, do you know?
Well, we look at right now, for our internal service, with our funds that we put in to replace everything, we're around $140,000 every year. We'll still have some internal service because of our mobiles and portables, but it's not going to be anything close to that. We should, you know, I, and Brian, if you maybe helped out, maybe it'd be, you know, maybe we'll be able to save $100,000. I hope so. Well, we still have some expenses for replacing our mobiles and portables, we don't have to look at towers anymore, no repeaters, receivers, any of that stuff that basically is getting outdated, and we're going to have to replace sooner or later anyway, so.
I can follow up on that. Part of the, the work that we're doing here, it's not part of this plan document, because this plan follows a specific format that the state and armor system requires. There'll be a separate follow-up report, again, working with these guys to try and nail down some of those specific cost savings.
Just one more question. The, the new radios that would go into the squads, is there, is there a communication process that goes on between those, what goes in these radios and the computers that are also in the squads, or are they totally two separate?
They are totally separate.
They're totally separate. So they don't, there's no way they communicate together?
No, I wish, no. I wish they did, but...
Well, I was just, I didn't, I didn't know, I don't, you know, technology's amazing, and I, so I just asked the question if, if, if one, if that would lead to having to do something then with the computers that are in there, in the, okay?
Public safety is a priority on them radio channels, and I mean, that's why it seems like it's so expensive and...
No, I, I understand what you guys are doing.
Just to take that one step further, though, you might have heard about this FirstNet project that's coming, and there's been all this research and background work done. Ultimately, someday, we don't know how far away, that will be a, some kind of voice system that looks a lot like a cellular system, but that's a long ways down the road. And, and the state, even though they're participating in that project and supporting that project, this armor system, which, you know, it's, it's a digital radio network, is meant to be a long-term voice radio network, that's extremely reliable. And so, yes, we kind of have two separate systems operating, but it's, it's the best way to do it today.
FirstNet's kind of the data and grants, you know, is on the board, and of course, Brian and Tori, we're all on that same board, and we talk about FirstNet, so I mean, we know that's coming eventually. Where you're dealing with federal government and millions and millions of dollars, it's going to be a while before it gets up there. But Minnesota's kind of on the leading edge, so in four or five years, you know, I'm going to be, yeah, well, I'll probably retire, but there'll be people up there talking to you about it, that it's coming, and this is what we're looking at.
The reason I ask that question is that I know that if a, if a 911 call goes in, and I'm going to use an example of my home area of Oakport, and a 911 call, of course, now the city of Moorhead is taking over the fire protection, but before it was Dilworth. But in the, it's my understanding that in the fire trucks or what have you, or where there's an ambulance going out there, they, they have a map that takes you directly to that location.
Correct.
So how does, how does it get to the computer about the address, when it's coming by radio to the person in the vehicle? That, that's my question. That's why I wonder if there's some communication.
Actually, currently, of course, on the software side, through dispatch, through, there's software involved, and then, call it over the air, there's actually air cards, you know, for the MDCs, so, so either Verizon or Sprint, so there's basically an air card that works off the cellular network, you know? So it's basically an LTE phone that's in the computer in each of the public safety vehicles.
Right. But I think you're looking at, Kevin, how does it go, you get the phone message, and then how does the map on, and how does it get out to?
Right, yeah, what's that process?
Well...
I think the dispatch... Dispatch, dispatch notifies Dilworth Fire that there's a fire at a given address, so they, so they get ready to go, and now when they're getting there, now all of a sudden, it somehow got mapped to their computer so it can take them there.
That's part of the software, and in fact...
You're talking, you're talking a little bit about the New World product that's going to be coming. We're moving to a enterprise, it's called. So timeline, we're talking in route mapping is what they're calling that, we use it for police and fire. I would say we're about a year and a half out of that, but we're planning that migration. We have money set aside, I'm part of that whole board.
But there's something that's working now, because, because it's my understanding that if an ambulance heads out to Oakport, their map, their computer map is helping them get directly to the location.
Yeah, and we previously did. In Moorhead, we had called Packet Cluster, and we used to have that software with different maps. But now specifically working with New World, which is the very large CAT RMS that we have as the entire county here, that doesn't work directly with it quite yet. It will, it's something that we expected it's going to cost, but we're, we're planning for that.
That can save lives.
Yeah, yeah, we're very much going to have that, in, they say, a year and a half about.
I've, I've also seen in the past where fire departments gone, taken the wrong road or went to the wrong place because of, you know, and that's, that's not good.
Would you like anything with, for tonight now with the city of Moorhead Council? My presentation to them is going to be our portion of this full plan is about $940,000 off of that 4.2. And then the $650,000 in grant monies that we're hoping for as well, or planning for. So that kind of gives you the, the bigger picture of...
So your 900-some thousand is, is, your radio is probably more than likely, right?
It is, it is. We have just under 200 radios. So we're to the point where, in our Internal Service Fund, we have those monies. At this point, it appears will go on consent, I haven't heard any different. But I have to buy radios soon anyways, so significant cost savings go into this system.
Jenny? Any other discussion on this matter? Okay, we need a resolution adopting the AMARE radio system participation plan and authorize migration of police wire radio communication to the public safety statewide on the system.
I would, so moved. Second.
I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Very none, all in favor, say yes, Brian. Say aye. All same side, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Nice work.
Okay. Anything else for the board this morning? Very adjourned.